All this meeting's ordered. I call my staff.
Commissioner Schneider.
Here.
Commissioner Goldman.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Wolf.
Here.
Commissioner Wybert is absent. Commissioner Felber.
Here.
And Commissioner Headstrom is absent. Let's move on.
I have a motion for approval of the minutes from the June 15 meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the June 15 meeting.
Second.
Second.
We do need to make sure we spell our asses.
I'm sorry.
But.
That's, that's me.
Make sure we don't have two different Wilsons here. And all that.
I'll, I'll correct that.
More discussion on that? All in favor, Senator? All opposed, same? Motion carries. Move on to the business, um, Section A. I will move that over to you, Tim.
Okay.
For T F D, twenty one.
Okay, this is consideration of a resolution, amending the subdivision regulations for Section three dash one oh six, agricultural block splits, uh, to include language establishing a subdivision exception allowing one additional split for residential purposes without a rezoning or platte, uh, on all properties zoned to agricultural. The commission may recommend either approval, approval with additional conditions, or make no change to Section three dash one oh six. This is what we spoke about back in June, and I kind of demonstrated, uh, it's actually been kind of ongoing since February. I've kind of shown you, uh, where I was going with this to allow for a distinction between those splits that are strictly for agricultural uses versus those for residential, and this would give also the Land Commission, uh, more of, uh, input as to what's going on in terms of these splits. Right now, everything's administrative and, you know, unless someone is actually going to be doing a full-blown subdivision that you can see before you, uh, that usually never happens, and there's administrative issues with the way it's constantly enforced. I thought changing it this way, I think we all, we all kind of discussed, and thought this was a good alternative or exception. This is all I got.
So, any more questions? Have any additional changes or motion in the board?
Yes, and we have no changes in this parcel, nothing but that. And I won't accept it, second.
All right, motion and second. Do you have any additional discussion? All right, during none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Okay, motion carries. We move on to Section B, C U P two three dash oh two, consideration of additional use permit to allow one hundred and forty-five foot self-advantaged power on a portion of land located in Section thirteen, township thirteen South Range, one west of the bust of Patrick Rowan, Skyward Land Services, Inc., on behalf of Calvi and Helen J. Smith, addresses five one five, North Poplar Street, um. Same, I'll hand it off to you.
Okay. This is a, uh, the applicant is proposing a one hundred and forty-five foot self-support communications tower for the purpose of improving cellular coverage in the area. Uh, the Federal Communications Commission currently oversees all regulatory requirements for cell tower approval. Municipalities are limited to regulating general structural safety requirements on these towers. The commission may recommend safety lighting, though the height of the proposed tower is below the height required by the FAA. Uh, the tower will be at least one hundred and forty-five feet from all property lines, uh, as required under current zoning setbacks. Uh, the residential structure on the property is located far south of the proposed location of the tower. Staff has not received any public comments on this proposal as of right now, so, uh, no comments from any other departments or agencies, this is far enough away from, uh, the Calvi municipal airport zone, so I don't think that's going to be an issue. Staff is recommending approval with the following conditions, any final FAA and FCC approvals submitted prior to building permit being issued. With that, uh, you can either approve, uh, with the above referenced condition, or approve with any additional conditions that be necessary. Uh, usually, these are pretty straightforward. This particular company, I think, I dealt with a couple of months ago, in Sully County as well, and still this is part of an upgrade, I think, or an improvement there. There's some coverage, and I think with that, the applicant is here.
The staff is only wanting to make an announcement for public comments.
Well, it's usually, it's customary to have the applicant.
Seal first. Okay, but there's some guidelines for public comment.
And that would seal from when that opens up.
Will it seal?
Okay.
Very good.
So.
Good evening, my name's Patrick Rowan, and I am the applicant, along with the Stevens that are here with us this evening. Um, our proposal is for a one hundred and forty-eight foot block pole. I don't want to be redundant with everything that Tim just mentioned, but I would like to point out that the fact, the, the county regulations require would be the height of the tower setback from all the property lines as he mentioned. The tower's one hundred and forty, one hundred and forty-five feet tall with an eight-foot lightning rod, and we are one hundred and ninety-seven feet from our northernmost boundary and two hundred and twenty-five feet from our easternmost boundary. And, uh, those are the closest ones, so we far and away exceed, uh, the county's requirements. Um, in addition, I do want, uh, this is for the benefit of the Verizon network and improving it and bringing in the latest technologies and allowing that to operate. Um, we are adjacent to the interstate. We've cited the power and our location that we think would have the least amount of effect on any of the neighboring property owners, yet accomplishing our goals for service and, um, quality of phone calls in native networks throughout, throughout the area. Um, with that being said, I do want to mention, I, we do accept, um, the condition that has been recommended by staff that we provide the FAA in advance of filing for the building permit, there's no issue with that whatsoever. With that being said, I'll take your questions, but you are, you know, kind of.
Questions, no questions? Thank you. Okay, now we can open the document here. We're gonna, uh, got stuff to read, so. Um, in when addressing the plan, the commission, the public's invited to speak to the board during a public hearing portion which we will open up immediately after this. Um, please raise your hand, and after being recognized, give your name and address and proceed for questions and comments. Shortly after the applicant presents his case, the commission may ask questions, the board will discuss. After the board rests, chair will invite comments from persons interested persons for, against, or neutral. The board will conduct discussion and take action if possible. Citizens are asked to limit your remarks, please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers, and due to the time frame, please limit your remarks to clear and concise statements. The chairman may have to put a limit on the number of speakers, the board will attempt to be fair, flexible, and to ensure all those that are interested are heard. All zoning changes, conditional uses, and subdivision proposals will go from this board to the county commissioners with recommendation of approval or denial. All issues heard this evening will go to the county commission after the fourteen day appeal period if applicable. Should you be interested in attending that meeting, please contact the zoning administrator or county clerk from the scheduled hearing date and time. If you wish to file a protest petition, please contact the zoning administrator if warranted. The zoning administrator will explain the petition process. Thank you for coming, and your input is always appreciated. So at this time, anything to say to?
Well, I was just going to mention that this case will, uh, be heard on August tenth at the county commissioners.
All right, do you have any public comments? During that, any discussion or thoughts from the commission moving forward? What is the height that FAA requires for lighting?
I believe is it's two hundred feet.
Tim?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve C U P twenty-three dash zero two.
Second.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, so move to the second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same. All right. C U P twenty-three dash zero two approved. Thank you. Now to Section C, C U P twenty-three dash zero three, conditional of additional use permit to allow the establishment of a container and equipment retail sales facility on a parcel of land zoned agricultural and located in Section eighteen, township thirteen South Range, one east of the shop, and then trust. Tim, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, this is, uh, looking at a, a tract that's approximately fifty-seven acres, look. Yeah, to the north of this tract, uh, it's, uh, zoned to add forty, it's actually add forty all the way around this. Agricultural, uh, uh, to the north would be agricultural with residential structures on twenty-two hundred Avenue. And, uh, to the south, you have agricultural slash commercial with a railroad right of way. And to the east, there's agricultural with residential located on Barn Road, add forty, uh, to the west with residential, uh, and that's adjacent to the city of Solomon. Actually, the city of Solomon is on it. Uh, the applicant is proposing the relocation of his existing retail facility currently located in Solomon at five twenty-five North Poplar Street, two eight five, a fifty-seven acre tract adjacent to the city of Solomon on Old Highway forty. The applicant's current location in Solomon will be the future site of the canning equipment currently located in Salina. The applicant's proposed facility on Old Forty will provide the same services and products as offered at the current location, the retail sales of heavy trucks, trailers, and equipment. The, the parcel in question is split by Old Forty Highway with the majority of acreage to the north and a smaller kind of triangular piece in the south. Portion of the south half is in the regulatory floodplain, uh, which the applicant intends to gravel and use as staging for equipment. This facility will be served by both city of Solomon, water and sewer. Uh, the site plan has been submitted from Calvi Engineering. I've included it in their package. The applicant is proposing, uh, to address some existing drainage issues on the west part of that parcel. Uh, after scaling, uh, the submitted site plan with the current effective grounds, a, uh, portion of that front elevation of the proposed structure, this is going to be one of the more parts of that parcel. A, it looks like there is a portion of that north part that is, may also be in the current effective floodplain. So, not all of that, that parcel is, but enough that scaled up to where it's just going to hit that front elevation of the building that's being proposed. And, uh, so, uh, the review criteria, uh, under Article twenty-six, one oh five two, the proposed use would be consistent with the intent and purpose of these regulations for promotion of economic development and national growth development. This area is predominantly farmland with few residential uses in the vicinity. Therefore, this location is compatible with neighboring uses. The commission has approved similar uses with identical language patterns in the past. Uh, the use does not place an undue burden on existing infrastructures and solid water and sewer reveals to the site, and the large scale water usage and waste is anticipated through this use. There have been some changes in the area with the addition of, uh, random, some random residential uses mixed into the agricultural. This, uh, property has remained in proplanted number of years. The property is suitable for proposed use due to the size and separation from adjacent residential uses, existing landscaping. May provide adequate buffering between adjacent residential uses. There are currently public water and sewer available within the vicinity to serve the facility. The, the, uh, proposed use would further enhance the implementation of the economic development as well as public, uh, safety aspects of the comprehensive plan for use would be consistent with the Solomon future land use map, which designates a portion of this site as an industrial section. Access to the residential properties is along twenty-two hundred Avenue or Barn Road. Therefore, the, the double entrance that's being proposed along Old Forty would not necessarily be a safety issue, and I'll get into that in just a minute. Uh, though it may be a minor contribution to existing traffic along Old Forty, uh, this facility will not contribute any noise, vibrations, smells, smoke through. In mind, though, a minor increase in dust from the gravitas areas may be present, but it's not significant. Uh, the proposed facility may not have an adverse impact on the surrounding area, as explained in items, uh, A through I above. Also, the distance between the limit of site development is shown on the site plan, and the nearest adjacent residential property will be at least five hundred feet, they designated the existing fifty-foot landscape. Uh, staff hasn't really received any public comments at this point, uh, until this evening. Comments from other departments, staff did consult with Road and Bridge Department. They have no issues or concerns with the double entrance along Old Forty. Uh, staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. The completed floodplain development permit application to be submitted prior to the building permit being issued. The, the finished floor elevation of the building relative to the base flood位elevation that you're proposing would be required. And I'm referring to the structure that's being proposed on the north park. So they will have to give me a finished floor elevation, and that's, I think, Calvi are looking at that. They may be able to help with that. Any fill within the floodplain over twelve inches, and I'm referring to the south part and, you know, maybe the north part too, if there's any fill there going in. Any fill within the floodplain over twelve inches will require approval from the State Division of Water Resources. Commission options are to recommend approval with the above referenced conditions, recommend approval with any additional conditions that be necessary. Table for further information or recommend denial. What I wanted to kind of go back to is, I did a, I checked, uh, K dot website for traffic counts, and I compared the traffic counts on Old Forty, that portion of Old Forty that the applicant is looking at versus it's the similar, uh, use that was approved, uh, last year, two years ago, with, uh, Long Nagger on North Fifty-Five. Okay, fifteen. And there's, uh, there's not as much traffic, I think there's like, eh, the average traffic count along Old Forty at that point is something like eighteen hundred daily, uh, back and forth. Uh, and, uh, and as far as the others that we've approved in the past have higher traffic counts. So, just kind of like to point that out too. And, uh, I've included some pictures as well, I did, uh, shots of, um, also where the, uh, where the proposed floodplain is going to be going into effect and how it will be going into effect until February of next year, so that map that I gave you that shows the floodplain is the proposed. And, uh, you notice, um, you notice on this line here is where the, the, the site plan is going to. Point out, there's a little area that's to the, on that north part. There's a line, if you look at it real close, where that's actually about where current effective floodplain is. Part, see, there's a line, you're kind of in the arctic area, it runs, a lot of shooting away. Uh, with that, uh, I have nothing else.
Okay. Anyone real quick have questions for Tim? You know, to that. Can I open up like the same thing?
It's all, it's all in there.
Okay. Oh, well, that was it. Um, well, at this time then, we'll open it up for public comment, I've already read the statement, so, um, you feel like you want to make a public comment, raise your hand and we'll call you up. Sir?
Uh, I'm Greg Bigsby.
Oh, good, come up here and state your name, you have, this is a little easier for us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Greg Bigsby, I live at twenty-one ninety-eight Golden Room, Holden, Kansas. I just got a few things, you're talking about the flood there, well, as you look at it now, there is a lot of, like, probably twenty feet wide by fifty foot, seventy-five, a turnbull top, like pond, right there on the end of Old Forty. So with them in the floodplain there, I have the land right across the street from Barn Road. So, they've already tried doing something with the road right there, and I just want to make sure that if the water is going to be going, for one, I don't want Holden Pond over there, because then you're talking more mosquitoes. I want them to build it up to portions of Indian Valley, where I, I can't mow it because of, I don't want some water there. The other thing is, I definitely would oppose, uh, an entrance on Barn Road. Create more dust there. Um, and as far as that right now, I just wanted to get my voice out there, a few things, uh, come to mind.
Sure, and that was it? Okay, and at this time, there is not a proposed partner entrance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, it's Solomon Forty. Tim, are there any, uh, of his concerns or questions that you can answer?
Uh, just that, uh, as far as the drainage issues, uh, usually what we try to do is have drainage go towards the roads, not your, not Barn Road, but towards, like, uh, go more towards Old Forty where the dish, the lower areas are there. And so, and, uh, based on, I think that what Mr. Henry is proposing as well is addressing, and I mean, it's not on your side, but on the west side of that parcel, addressing the drainage to kind of relieve some of this rest there, and, and it would be far enough, and so I don't know what effect that would have on your property, but it's, it's, I don't think it's an impact.
All right, yeah, I'm not sure if there's another drainage to go underneath Old Forty to the west, but I know that there's been that section there to where they tried, they actually dug out and redid a culvert underneath Barn Road to try to get going through there, but then if that was the case, you look at it now, all those weeds that are pretty tall and wearing up go back there, so, hey, like, that's. That would definitely was a couple of my concerns on hearing about the proposed on the entrance in Barn Road.
Thank you.
I could explain the water drain?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
There were weeds from the triangular shape piece on the south side of Old Forty. There's a culvert that goes under Old Forty, it's got three big box tubes. The area that the water comes out of that area is only about one box tube. So, I kind of came up with the idea of, we would make a waterway that kind of comes around the road, and, uh, we would use that herd to raise, to shades the middle of it, and we could use this waterway slash Holden area, so that the water can get underneath Old Forty. You know, and when it came over there, it would have an area that would be held with wall as way to get through the smaller tube. But, so it's kind of like, uh, something that would work for everyone. So it'll get the water, should get the water from the north side of the road across Old Forty easier, and it'll be a Holden area, and be a center way to get underneath the rest of the tracks here.
Thank you. Any other additional public comments or questions? It's me on, I'm on up.
Hello, my name is Jessica, I'm from one oh nine South, my property abuts what would be the south part of the triangle. Um, I'm familiar with your facility, I actually had a rental, uh, storage unit. Um, I have some questions though, because my property is quite big. As it is currently, uh, on North Poplar, there are stacks and stacks and stacks of storage units high. Um, so one of my first questions is, like, will we be stacking, will that be something that, um, you know, will keep it sort of ground level? Because, to me, that would be, um, detrimental to a lot of things for me personally. Um, so I'm curious about, like, are we going to stack stuff like we do up north? Um, I also, I have a few questions, but I don't want to waste everybody's time, but I, I guess I have, um, concerns about a lot of this. As it is right now, I'm sort of on my own in that area, and so I just want to make sure that, you know, um, what, what kind of security is going to be there? Um, uh, I have a list, but entry and exit points, you mentioned on Old Forty, so is there anything that's going to be coming through like the city roads or anything like that?
So, I'll show you, it's just right here, this is where the entrance and entry are.
Okay.
So there's nothing from the city, nothing from over there.
Okay, that helps, I was concerned about that, um. And then, I was also concerned, like, what kind of structures, you mentioned the buildings, will it be a single building? Will it be like the traditional, like, usual storage containers, or will it be your normal container? Like what you're doing where you are now, um. I know that's sort of a lot, I asked a lot of questions.
A lot of questions.
I'm very curious about this, I only, I only heard about this recently, relatively recently, so, um, it's mainly an item to, thank you.
Thank you. Tim, are any of those ones to each an answer?
Uh, I would defer to the applicant on the container storage and, uh, jury.
This is great. Sorry.
Okay, that's okay, it's worth it for. Okay, as far as the stacking, yes, we have to stack. No air out. Um, now, one thing I did do is on the waterway part that I talked about before, most of that dirt is coming out behind her house. So not as there only going to be a fifty-foot barrier, it's going to be, I don't know how many feet. There's going to be a considerable barrier before the container start by design, so it wouldn't be too close any residential property. Um, as far as security, I'm not sure about it.
Would it be similar to what you have currently?
Yeah, there'd be, yeah, you could.
Ages that are locked and not from the ledger.
We're not going to put a fence around it.
I think a lot of times in the past, in the recent past, we've had people on, on these types of situations that were. I think a lot of times in the past, in the recent past, we've had people on these types of situations that were in a powerful exploration. You have like surveillance and things like that so that it won't be an attractive thing for somebody to jump the fence and say, let me see what I can see.
Well, I hadn't planned, we haven't had problems in the past with any of that.
Yeah, I know.
But, no, I had not planned on any videos or anything like that. But, so I guess you answer that, so. You know, I'll be, you know, we haven't exactly figured out how everything's going to lay out in there. Yes, but we've got the general idea, but anyway.
The only reason I ask that is because that's been, as of late, recently with recent cases, it's kind of like security and the kind of, you know. I'm sure, I think it's a recent problem.
Obviously, there might be just a few gravel. You know, they would be single level if we did. And as far as the building's concerned, it's not going on that parcel. It's going on the north side of the road. And it's going to be a new balon building, which is kind of a private building. And it's going to be nice.
So can I ask a question then? They're asked a question. Is, so the storage units themselves are going to stay south of Old Forty?
For the most part, yeah. We have to do repair and everything on them on the north side.
So what I worry about is aesthetics coming into town and then for our property, why not there?
That's one reason why I have the containers on the bottom, which cost me a lot more money to do that than if I just put them on the hill. But I felt like aesthetically would be better figured out and that. Now, you know, we do have to bring them across the road to work on them and this, that and the other. We will have some single level to store our own stuff in that we use.
Are there any additional questions?
My name is Dan Winyman. I'm from Solomon, City of Solomon Zoning. We did have a meeting last week, and this did get brought up at the meeting. I discussed it with all the committee members and stuff. And we discussed all the things that we talked about tonight. And I did not get any negative comment from any of the committee members on the planning and zoning. They were in, they were in complete support of this. I would like to say something. I've lived across the street from Chuck Henry Sales for twenty-four years. Aesthetically, it changes because his business changes. The containers count and containers go, the trailers count and the trailers go. But I will say one thing, they were always neat. They were always stacked in an orderly manner, and things were kept clean around them. So he, he keeps it tight, a tidy place. And like I said, I've, I've lived across the street from him for twenty-four years. With that being said, I'll let you know that I work for one dude. And, but it's, but he, he takes care of his place. And every piece of property that Chuck and Janine have purchased in Solomon, it's been better when they left. And he always considers the neighbors. And the buffer zone that he talks about, it'll be kept. And he'll be what he, he'll be what he says. But from Planning and Zoning Committee, we gave it a hundred percent.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Hellwitz, and I am also from Solomon, Planning and Zoning Committee. The only thing I wanted to add to what Dan said was that all of these things were reviewed with city staff from Solomon because in all likelihood, water and maybe sewer will be extended into that area. And so we did review with city staff what those would entail. They were very accepting of it. And the questions about the aesthetics, there was also a question that came up in our discussions about where those containers would be located. Would they be an issue with, with the viewscape around the curves of the highway, those kinds of things? And so I think everything that we heard said, none of those issues would be. So as Dan's already indicated, we reviewed these things. We know it's not our purview, but nonetheless, it's right on the end of the city and we thought we owed it to everyone in town to take a look. And again, as Dan said, everything in our, in our view was very supportive, so.
And just as, so before I wrap, and I included the packets, three of those were taken from Main Street. About where they proposed entrance. It's going to be.
Any additional comments or questions? Okay, all right. Question? If any.
I do have one comment. Who said that they would do this with the County Highway Department?
Yes.
Okay, and two additional entry ways there. Any consideration, you said there's eighteen hundred vehicles a day go by there?
On average.
On average, yeah, on average. And where we're talking here, where we're talking here, we're probably maybe a couple hundred yards to the city limit. When you reach the city limit, the speed limit is there. Is there any consideration about extending that out past his, his driveway? Because I can tell you, people work in sliding areas, but nobody drives, nobody drives fifty-five mile an hour. And you get to Solomon and the little boy with the red light meets him there a lot of times too when you're.
That would be a question probably best for these guys up here.
That, that one brought up. That was brought up, and it was addressed that we, that we extend that lower speed limit to, to the east of that property, probably to Barn Road, so that the traffic would be slowed down in through there. And that was brought up and discussed at, at our planning and zoning, where we're going to make that request to the county that that be, that that be taken here.
Thank you. Is there?
Yeah, okay.
There was a discussion with the Revenue and Bridge Department about having the truck crossing signs there. And also that they extended the speed limit out, which they found like to be reasonably true this way.
Any other thoughts, comments, questions, or questions? All right, we got our options.
I make a motion, we approve C and B twenty-three dash zero three. We include the staff recommendations of the. Divisional Leash.
Different conditions?
Yes.
All right, the motion is second. Any additional discussions? All right, hold in favor. Raise your hand. All opposed, Tim? Okay, that's C and B twenty-three dash zero three. It's opposed. Pass on to the next one.
And this goes to, this particular case will go before the County Commission on the third of August.
Oh, you said the ten earlier.
The ten for that, for.
Oh, for the other one. This one's the third.
And this is going to be for the third.
Okay. Any old business, none, any staff update?
We received from Division of Water Resources, watch your fingers, the floodplain maps that have been worked on for you, it seems like eternity. They, they're anticipating giving us a R and O problems on FEMA's end. We're going to probably get a letter of final determination in August. That will give us six months without the floodplain maps.
August of this year?
Yes. Yes, it's been, yeah, it's been a year. But anyway, other than that, I don't have anything else. Your next meeting is scheduled for the seventh of August.
I have a motion for your name?
So.
Hold in favor? Thank you, everyone.
And I'll correct your name there. This one.
Yeah, I can answer that question.
So. It's these proposed containers, these other black and white. And I, and I anyway, so it's the future.
Not always, right?
We've been attempting to ski things.
You both can't stand away from some.
Like, like.
All right, call it a night.
Thank you.